All right, good evening, everybody. It is Monday, October 6, 2025 at 6:01 PM. With the Coram being present, I will call to order the Free Town Board of Sluck meeting. Tonight's meeting will be on Zoom and it's also in person. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. So kickoff. Item one is discussion of vote whether to approve the event application from Patches Hill Farms for October 25th, 2025. And this is for a RC enthusiast event. And I think this is at least the second year, maybe third that we've done this. I haven't heard any problems with it. Has anybody? And they filed all the proper paperwork they need to?
Yes, I have everything signed off. They've spoken with the Board of Health. And I believe everyone else has signed.
I think I might bring my sons. I think he'll love this.
Not sure if Jacob, he's on the Zoom. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, yes.
How are we doing?
This is the third year that we have this going this year. It's our fall event. It's a little bit smaller event. So we're excited to open up the farm once again and have the local hobbyists and the local community kind of come together for a fun day of remote controlled trucks on the farm.
Sounds great. All right, any questions or concerns?
No, none at all.
None at all. He's got a good looking trustworthy beard. So I'm good.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the event application for Patches Hill Farms for October 25th, 2025.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fluckman Lopes?
Yes.
Fluckman Zager?
Yes.
Fluckman Matthews?
Yes. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Maybe he'll see me down there. All right.
Excellent. We invite everybody. Come on out. We're looking forward to a great day.
Perfect.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on now to agenda item two. This is presentation on the Free Town Elementary School Boiler Project. And we have a gentleman on the Zoom to give this presentation.
Yep, we have, it looks like Ben Miller.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Great, how are you?
Hey, Ben.
Good, thank you.
All right, you can kick it off whenever you'd like.
Okay. Let me see if I can.
Ask maybe John to turn it up a little bit.
Would you like me to share my screen?
Yeah, sure. We have, I think we all have the, in the packet, the presentation anyways. But I think it would be, it would be good to share it for the public, for anyone that's watching or watching this record, this video later on.
Luann's gonna make you a co-host, so you can do that. Okay, you're a co-host now, so you should be able to go ahead and share your screen.
Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
So we worked with, my name is Ben Miller. I'm with GGD Consulting Engineers. We're in Dartmouth, Massachusetts. And we were tasked with doing a study with Habib and Associates, who's been doing some work in the town, for doing a study on the existing boiler plant study at the Free Town Elementary School. So we put together this report, and this report includes a study of our initial findings, cost estimate, and schematic drawings of what we're planning on having on the proposed scope of work. So just to go through it very quick, because like you said, you've all had a chance to go through the report. The school is currently heated by two Cleaver Brooks fire tube boilers. The boilers are from 1979. They're well exceeded past their serviceable life expectancy. And the last major renovation in the building was in 2001. At that time, some of the hydronic equipment was updated, such as the hot water pumps, the expansion tank. There's a fuel oil system which serves, the boilers are number two heating, home heating oil. There's a tank outside which supplies that. Here's a picture up here of the pumps, the expansion tank in the back. These are all circa the 2001 renovation. Down in the bottom corner, we have the fuel oil pumps. And then in the lower side, we have the tank. I actually have a slideshow that I can pull up larger pictures of later if we need to. So just going through this, the school has recently gone through a controls upgrade, although the boilers are not fully integrated into it yet. I think it has a very light readout of what that can be done. But with, if we were to upgrade the central heating plant, you'd have more controls for alarm notification and adjustability through your building management system than you currently have now. We coordinated with the facility staff while we were on site, and there's no glycol currently utilized in the system. Glycol is a, propylene glycol is a mixture that's added with the water to help freeze protection, where you have hydronic systems, water systems running through your building. You mix glycol with it, so you have a lower freezing point than 32 degrees, just in case a valve gets stuck open or something like that happens. So we would recommend glycol being put back into the system. And then this picture is just a picture of the boilers, just to give you a proximity layout of the room. And the picture in the front is actually just showing the common breaching exhaust header, which ties into, it actually runs to the back of the room and then goes out to a standing boiler shaft, breaching shaft. So our recommendations would be to provide a hazardous materials test report. And again, we talked to facilities while we were out there, and they have up to date reports that we could, for the coordinate with them to make sure any abatement testing that needs to be performed, we have a record of it, and then if there's any further testing before any demolition. So we try to negate or minimize anything unforeseen from coming up. That way we have full documentation. And then our recommendations are to remove the existing boilers, pumps, fuel oil pumps, fuel oil tank, piping, controls, and accessories. This is just limited to inside the boiler room. Install two new oil-fired boilers matching the capacity of the existing boilers. Boilers should be considered to have energy-saving features like package controls. They would probably be able to turn down, possibly even economize their control. So we would look into that from different manufacturers and see what we could do to maximize energy efficiency. We would recommend two new base mounted pumps with variable frequency drives, so we could get turned down and increase energy efficiency across your heating system, not only in the boiler plant, but that would be recognized throughout the building. And then new fuel oil systems, including oil pumps, tank monitoring systems, lamps and controls. The existing fuel tanks should be replaced based on the age and observed conditions. There was some rust and some blistering of the tank that was noted. Tanks usually have an inner and an outer shell. We just did a visual inspection, but just the exterior shell looks like it's sat in the show, signs of its age. And so that's where these recommendations are coming from. One of the, if the tank, you know, we could further research the tank and maybe it potentially could have some extended life expectancy if we were to sand it down and maybe provide a new coat of paint to it. I think in our cost estimate, we owned new tanks, but we can take a look through here. So we just have our basic requirements, demolition, HEAC and plumbing work. And these are just how we're coming up with our Drake bus. And then we have testing and balancing, startup and commissioning. And then we have a summarization of the costs on page one and two. So overall, we're coming out with an approximate cost of $1,7676 across the building. That's a cost of approximately $7.92.
Okay.
And then just, yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought you all said.
Nope. Just a, just a final, just schematic page. So this is just kind of a flow plan layout of what we had in the building. And these are your two boilers that would be coming out. Your domestic water system is also in that room, but that would be existing to remain. We would be replacing, these are the two base mounted pumps and the air separator up Okay, sorry. Did you have a question?
Yeah, no, just, and I'm not, thank you very much, by the way. This is very helpful, and I think this was nice and clear. It was, you know, easy to read presentation for someone who has no idea what they're looking at, so I appreciate that. My questions really come to what this doesn't cover, right, which is the architectural and structural scope. So, and maybe, you know, I don't know, Dev, you have an idea of what kind of cost we're looking at for that part of the work? And then also the hazardous materials testing?
Yeah, I don't know about the hazardous material stuff. That can be, the testing isn't expensive. It's obviously the abatement work and until we know what's there. So I'd have to probably speak with Greg Goodwin. He'd probably have a better idea than the facilities manager of the school.
He might be doing something already for testing, right? They're supposed to. So there should be something. And then something else that we need, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but obviously it's kind of my wheelhouse a little bit. And, you know, is us looking at, Bruce, you didn't say much about the, is there, how does the pad look as that the tanks are sitting on? Is it up to date with compliance? Or will there need to be a new pad put down for where those tanks are? You know?
Where the oil tank is or where the boilers are?
Where the oil tank is. Because if we're talking about doing testing outside on all the soils and everything and removal of everything, does it make sense to do the pad at the same time? I don't know what the pad's shape is and if it's up to date compliance-wise.
So I didn't notice anything in the pad that of concern or that gave me any indication that it wouldn't be fit for use. I think what we would need to do is typically, in my experience, when we've had to do replacement tanks, we give them the size of the original tank and we just try to match that up. So it's going back in the same location. I would, I would think unless there's some kind of breaching that we would know about and I didn't see any signs of anything, and I don't know if your facilities director would know if you've had anything, but I would assume those alarms would have gone off where, you know, someone would know if there was some kind of containment breaching.
So as far as the OPM and the architect, I mean, by law, we don't have to have an OPM under $1.5 million. That being said, we need somebody to oversee the project because it's not my wheelhouse either. And the abatement piece, if there is hazardous materials, you know, is expensive. So my guesstimate, if I were to say, let's fund this, I'd be looking at $1.1 million 250,000 to make sure we have enough to cover everything that we need. We still need to do some of that testing, which like I said, I could work with Greg Goodwin to see what's been done and what he thinks, because he'll have a good, he'll have a good idea, and I'll be able to get that more solidified and then figure out who will oversee the project in terms of replacing the boiler.
Yep, that makes sense.
I know, I know that there was a question about possibly, what would you do with, you know, the new buildings that we're building? They're all electric and they're all heat pumps or mini splits. So there was a question about, do we do that here? Do we switch everything over? And that was one of the reasons why I wanted to have Habib come in to answer that question, because I can't answer that. So I'm not sure that that's something that has been looked at, or has it only been to replace the existing boilers that are there?
So we haven't studied it specifically in this instance, but we do a lot of electrification changeover projects. Typically, what it is, is a shift from whatever fuel, in this case, it would be oil, to a pretty substantial electrical upgrade. So you have the provisions for that. With that infrastructure, not only is it just the electrical upgrade component, but then you have condensing units that need to either go on your roof or somewhere, you know, we have to find a home for on the site. And if typically, they're on the roof, so they're away from, you know, people that you don't want around there or fence off or anything like that. But if they're on the roof, then there's structural provisions that need to be looked at and items like that. I don't know how that would compare to just the boiler replacement upgrade. I think it would be substantially more right now, because in the, with a boiler, it's, it's a central plant upgrade instead of a, throughout your building. And that cost of going to literally each room, because you would have to update each piece of equipment in every room to be able to do that. It would no longer be served by your hot water system.
That feels expensive. I'm just thinking about how many rooms there are, right?
Yes. That's a long window of saying, yes, it would be expensive.
Mr. Miller, what's the timeframe? Let's say this gets approved at town meeting, then we move forward with it. Are you guys, I know it's a lot of steel for those boilers. Any issues with getting the parts we need for this project? And if so, if, well, if not, what's the timeframe? Are we looking at, is this a summer project that we do? Is this a two-week project? What do you estimate?
Yeah, so we'd want to coordinate that with Habib and Associates as far as like our bidding schedule and where we would get it out. When we were working on pricing for this, we checked on equipment availability, and it's 12 to 14 weeks from proof of middles. So that's, the equipment is not that much of a long lead time. It would be how quick we could get it into a full design, get it on the streets, get it through a proper bidding sequence, and then contractors would have to get their contracts worked out with the town. So could it be done this summer? I'm not really positive. I'd have to confirm that with the architect.
But it could be done in a summer, right?
It could be done in a summer.
Okay.
Most boiler replacements are done, yes.
Mr. Miller, other than regular factory warranties, over the years, the town has, you know, built this building and then learned everything about jockey pumps and HVAC units and everything else, is there any warranty beyond the manufacturer's warranty for these parts? Something that either your company provides or, you know, industry standard for these type of things?
Typically, the warranty is not provided by the consulting engineer. It would be provided by the contractor. And typically, it's, it's 12 months. So through one full season, you can build in extending the warranties, but it does make the contractors bid increase because the longevity and service.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, nobody wants to be holding the bag. It makes sense.
It does. But if someone's gonna ask, we might as well get ahead of it and ask the question, so we know the answer, so.
Yeah, no, I think it comes down to if we've learned anything that's preventative maintenance, right? Like, and that wouldn't be through warranty, that would be, you know, a third party and us doing something.
Having maintenance schedules, right?
Maintenance guys that are doing regularly, you know, regularly scheduled stuff to keep up with the systems. That's really one of our key things.
And so, so, sorry, on that point, when the contractor does do the installation, they'll be required to do like a, they'll do a training session with whoever the proper personnel is in by the town, and they video record that, and then they turn over either a USB or some kind of digital copy of the recording, so you have that on record. So not only will you get all the submittal package, all the ONMs, physical copies, but you also get that electronic package as well. So it helps you with your service and.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
So once these boilers are in, right, I can, I can already foresee questions coming in from either public, parents or teachers. Well, listening, right now, the Cleaver, the Cleaver Brooks are getting 80% efficiency. They were built in the 70s, when things were built, you know, still with metal and some good parts. I expect, or should we suspect that the parts today are the same, all metal? Or could we have hard water in that area, right? You mentioned some sediment in the water. More than likely, it's probably manganese, like the rest of the town and other similar compounds. Do you guys use like glass line boilers? Is this what this has? It's ready for hard sediment areas?
Yes, so this is a little bit of a different type of the Cleaver Brooks boiler of the fire tube application. But essentially, this is still about an 80, 82, 80, under 85% efficient boiler, because that's just a byproduct of using number two heating oil. So with, when you're using oil, you can't have those low temperature condensing applications, which maximizes your efficiencies that you have with either gas or propane. So this is basically, you know, a cast iron steel boiler. It does have a little bit better electronics and programming, definitely better than the 1979 electronics set of running those two. But through programming, it should be able to modulate its efficiency better.
All right, last question, I promise. Cybersecurity. Is your, are these new systems that are coming online connected to the net? Was that made as performed onsite? I'm just thinking about future threats that a lot of municipalities tend to have with their HVAC systems, electrical systems and everything else.
Sure. So what we typically do in our HEAC systems is it's a separate connection, so it's available, it's web accessible from anywhere, but it's not tied into like your, the same, you can access it from your, from any computer in the building, but it's not necessarily connected to like your office administration computers per se. So this will bring you to a homepage for the building management system where you could have a pull down. And I think you already have this at some of the other schools in the region. I'm not sure if it's train controls that you guys are operating in the remainder of your buildings, but you have a front-end control system in that dashboard allows you to go to where you want to, and you'd be able to see alarms, notifications, you'd be able to set your, your schedules, see what your water temperatures are leaving, coming.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thanks, man.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, man. You take care.
All right, so agenda item three is discussion of whether out of the Free Town Elementary School Boiler Project to the next town meeting.
Subject to funding, I would say. I don't have available funds at this point. Usually, right around now, they'll start to come out free cash and whatnot. So I think that we will have to wait for funding to determine whether we can put that on town meeting or not.
Okay.
And I don't know what I'm gonna have for competing needs at this point, you know what I mean? But it's certainly something that we need to address.
Before it's an emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we know we're gonna, we're like, probably, we know how long these things take, even if it goes best-case scenario, it's still probably.
My, my goal is if we have free cash and we don't have some other pending need that's bigger, is to fund this at the next town meeting in January. That would be my goal, but I think as of tonight, I don't have enough information to tell you whether we even have that kind of funds available in free cash.
Okay.
So, and I can't, a January meeting, I won't be able to use tax levy, so I can't, we can't really make that decision tonight, because I don't have all of the necessary information. But it's something that, we know last year, there was an issue with the boiler. I mean, it needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on borrowed time.
Yeah.
You know, my question with the HVAC was, you know, I know some of the teachers and I'm sure students, parents, it's cold or warm, different parts of the building, at different parts, parts of the day. To me, HVAC or the heat pumps gives you a more clear, consistent heat and cooling throughout the building. Short-term, yes, probably more money. Long-term, is it that we save money, right? Not having 12,000 gallons of oil sitting in the back, in the back parking lot.
Yeah. Especially if you pair it with like solar panels.
Right.
Did he, did he, did he indicate how much more it might cost?
He said, he said more, but he didn't.
He said substantially more, because obviously it would be the whole entire building.
Yeah, I think.
And it's like a different type of estimate, right? Because like, there's like actual physical construction going on in every single building, right? So like, like then the structural part of it, like whether the roof can handle it or not. But I mean, if it was easy, I'd say that makes a lot of sense to me if we could.
I can ask them if they can do any kind of work, just to, you know, I can try to find out like how far, how much more, how, is it, is it reasonable or is it just out of our realm? I mean, the problem we have is we've got this million dollar net, which is actually creeping up to be a million and a quarter, you know?
Yeah.
Quarter million. And then we have the roof coming, right? So we know we've got two to three million dollars we have to spend on the roof, so we have to plan for that too, so.
And windows.
Yeah, well, the windows and doors are, I'm hoping that they'll put in for the grant and we'll get that 50% paid for. But, but we're paying for the roof and we're paying, so we've got substantial spendings that we have to do over there in a relatively short period of time. So it, it may be that it has to be this million dollars, because something different will be three, four, five million that we just don't have. Because we've got to do the roof, which is at its life's end as well. I think that really, major things haven't been done in over 20 years at the school, probably 2001, isn't that what he said? probably 2001, isn't that what he said?
He said 2001 with the update on this, which is probably in line with a bunch of
So right now, right, so we're going on 25 years, so that's, that's my, you know, that's why all these things are coming now, and we need to, we need to start addressing them before we have major issues, so.
I might have been a student there.
Probably.
2000, I think it was.
So I would say we're gonna pass on that question. I will bring it back when I have some more funding numbers.
Okay, sounds good. So pass on four then, uh, three, sorry. And then now, agenda item four, discussion on civil fingerprinting policy with the chief, please. Chief, thanks for joining us. So, want to just give us the high level, I mean, it's somewhat self-explanatory, but maybe just kind of the, the genesis of this?
Sure, so most recent inspection by the state flagged us on not having a civil fingerprinting policy for the department. And currently, the police department was following state statute and civil fingerprinting. And what that means is whenever we have a new employee in the department, whether it's police or communications and they have access to Corey, they're required by statute to be fingerprinted and a background check is performed. Additionally, the other function we were used by statute is fingerprinting ice cream vendors. However, the statute was lacking, so the statute regarding ice cream vendors identified that local law enforcement fingerprint, but it was lacking in the direction that we could use that fingerprinting to submit for Corey. So up to this present day, we have been, whenever we did have an applicant for ice cream vendors, we'd fingerprint, keep the fingerprints on file, but not support it with background checking. From, from this inspection, just let, let me down this rabbit hole to see that there are the communities out there that have accepted a, a general law that was passed back in 2012, Mass General Law Chapter Six, Section 172B and a half. Basically, it was an ICORI, a Corey reform that was passed during that time, and it basically gave the ability to local law enforcement to assist cities and town administration in their processing of licensing and permits. And the direction of that was basically identified to deal with vulnerable populations and positions of public trust. And I'm not really sure if you had the, seen the draft policy that I originally submitted, but it identified five or six different types of permits that these cities and towns that were identified, like dealer of secondhand articles, hackney drivers, taxi drivers, hawking and pedaling, door-to-door salesperson's permits, ice cream and food vendor trucks, motor vehicle dealers and pawn dealers. So in order to be able to use this mass general law, it has to be approved by the town at a town vote, and then the town would have to create a bylaw identifying the, the process of the civil fingerprinting bylaw. Now, currently, the police department does not assist the town at all with any of the permits and the background checking. So from what I understand, the town does its own ICORI check, which is very limited. You don't have the same access that the local law enforcement has. And on top of that, it's prone to vulnerability because you only have limited information regarding the permit. Someone submits an application, there's a chance that the identity of the person might not be true, or there might be other information to support who that person really is.
Yeah.
So it's limited. And by having the police department available to assist with this, it's no more than a, a recommendation that would be supported to the appointing authority or the, the licensing authority for that permit. So it's, the police department's not the end-all for these permits, it's no more than advisory after a thorough background check and the identity is confirmed of the applicant of the permitting process.
That makes sense. One just thing I just thought about when looking through this, like, so say if I'm an ice tree, ice cream truck vendor and I go and I get my, I go through this, I submit my fingerprints, it goes out, but I actually have somebody else works for me driving and, you know, so that interaction with the, with the vulnerable population could, like, so do we also require that for employees? Or is it just the, you know?
I believe with that, they supposed to have, the, the ice cream vendor is supposed to have their picture posted inside of the ice cream vendor's vehicle to match the person that's.
Okay, that makes sense. So it's like a, yeah, a self, yeah.
Yeah.
Because something I never really thought about until like, I read this, I was like, yeah, like, it's, you know?
But currently, there's not a mechanism in place for law enforcement to assist the town and its entities in the permitting process. So this is just no more than a better tool for local government to make sure not only one, that you're dealing with the right person, and two, that they're actually suitable for the permit that they're requesting.
Makes sense.
Some, but some of these things, like I look at, dealer of secondhand articles or, you know, things like that, there was, you know, does that include car dealers, right? So if we have a car dealership in town and they have multiple employees, kind of to what, you know, I'm, so Matthews just said, like, we could have, something like that might have a higher turnover rate, and then posting their employees' pictures and it's just the, the whole thing sounds bizarre. So how, towns, is there many towns that you know of that have?
When I did my research, there's only a couple towns within Bristol County that have adopted this statute. More of the cities and towns that are closer to Boston, which kind of makes sense, they probably have more fluctuation of these type of permits and whatnot. But, yeah, I don't want to confuse like the permitting process with some of the requirements for ice cream vendors, right? Part of the statute there is that they're required to, you know, post their picture, but the, the other vendors might not have to do that, right? They just basically are getting a, a background check and I, confirming their identity for the permit, that's it, right? So just want to be clear on, on that.
Yeah, well, I guess because to his point is if I'm, if I own one of these other businesses and it's me, I go through this thorough back, background check, but then I hire Carlos, then this is gonna be no different, and it seems like we're doing extra work. And, you know, that, that's definitely a, a solid bring up and, you know, something to think about as we think about this whole.
But, yeah, but I think this is a step in the right direction either way. I think it does make sense, like if we're gonna, you know.
I think a lot of cities and towns are not adopting this because it's a process. You have to put it to the town floor and have it voted on, and then the.
And that's gonna be tough, because you're gonna look at a town with people who are very big on their freedom and, you know, I don't know.
But at the end of the day, if the town does not accept this, then I still have to stay in compliance with CGIS. And what, what does that mean? Then I have to pivot and readjust a policy that identifies the fingerprinting civilly with those entities that I'm currently dealing with. So this is not the end-all.
Yeah.
I'm offering a service from law enforcement to assist you folks in making good decisions.
I'm not, I'm not attacking, I'm just thinking of it and to how this could be spun and, you know, why people will think of this as infringing on their privacy, right? And so that, that might, might be an issue.
It's, it's tough. Yeah, it's tough.
But then, but we also, I mean, our one, you know, not us, your number one job is to protect our, our riders, yourself and your residents, right? So, so that, that's the, the reason, and I can also appreciate that.
But I think things have fallen through the cracks in the past with the former chief. He expressed an incident that took place where someone was granted a permit and probably shouldn't have, and he got questioned by another local law enforcement official, and basically his response was he didn't have any assistance with that permitting process. And that's no fault of the board at the time, because they just didn't have the tools and the means to have a valid review of the applicant at the time. So, but this type of process solidifies that where at least you have that information. And dealing with the current public and the current people that have these licenses, if they've been in good standing and there haven't been any issues, then a current background check probably wouldn't even affect them. It's the new applicants that are coming in that we're, we're really concerned about.
I have, I have a question. So you're talking about taking existing businesses and doing background checks on them?
None at all. If they have to reapply for one of these licenses, because I'm not really sure if there's a timeframe on them.
You're gonna, you, they have to come in and be fingerprinted to get their license renewed? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it would have to fall in suit with whatever the bylaw would be.
So you just mentioned that there was something fell through the cracks with one of these businesses?
Uh, I don't know the specifics. It was just described to me as like one of the permitting processes that the town.
For one of these types of businesses or for the ice cream truck, which is a totally different sort of animal?
Yeah, I don't have all the details to.
Where did you get these businesses? How did you handpick these businesses as opposed to any business in town? Are these more likely to be criminal in nature? Do you find a lot of crime in these types of businesses?
These businesses right here were identified in another community's policy, and when I looked at them, I thought they to be relevant to our community, even though we don't have any taxi drivers, but as population grows, is there a chance that we could have a taxi business in town? Absolutely. And whatever businesses that are identified, it's at the, you know, direction of the community. Maybe you only want half of these, maybe you only want to have one of them. That's a, that's up to the town in regarding with the bylaw. But all these types of permits and dealerships could be potentially in our community, like pawn dealership right now, do we have a pawn dealership in town? I don't think so. Is it possible somebody could move into town and create, have a pawn dealership license?
It makes sense, like if someone, like the Corey check comes back and they've been arrested for selling, selling, you know, counterfeit goods, a pawn dealer, or if someone's working with children and there's some kind of, you know, child abuse on their record, like I, I get the, the ethos here, but I.
I think my concern is hawker, hawking and pedaling, door-to-door sales. If your intent is to commit a crime, you're not pulling a permit and getting fingerprinted. You're just going door-to-door.
Well, the same thing with taxi drivers, right? Like we're saying taxi drivers, so if, I'm not gonna use the name because I don't wanna get myself in trouble for using a business's name, but there's a lot of online tools of people use, right, apps to get picked up door-to-door now, so how do we include?
Yeah.
Those drivers, where would it be any different than a, a business that physically places itself in Free Town?
Yeah. I think, I think it's an anti-business clause and it concerns me. It concerns me for a lot of reasons, because it just opens up a lot of subjectiveness if you do a background check and then the board is presented with that information. So somebody has an arrest on their record, but not, hasn't been convicted. Depending on the board will depend on whether they get their license or not, because it'll be subjective to this board on how they, how they handle that information. I also, I mean, and what if somebody was arrested and convicted and served their time and was rehabilitated? 20 years ago, they got something done when they were 18, and now they're 35 and they want to open a business in the town of Free Town, but you're gonna be fingerprinted and Corey checked. I just, I can, I'm concerned about where this begins and ends. You bring in taxi drivers, but not Uber or Lyft drivers. You bring in used secondhand dealers, but not brand-new dealers. I mean, it's random to, in my opinion, of where these businesses came from. It's, it's, you know, I, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about violating people's constitutional rights and not, and then steering, steering businesses away from Free Town. But that's just my personal opinion, so I think there's a lot of questions to be answered about how we get, how we do that. I mean, I just, I just think I believe businesses like, I've never had to be fingerprinted to run a business.
Yeah, you'd have to have a very, I think, a pretty clear policy. Right, like, yeah, because you're right, it can get murky waters, right? If someone got a DUI, you know, 10 years ago, do, like, would we prevent them from being able to drive, now drive an ice cream truck? Maybe there's an argument for that, but at the same time, it's like, you know, people make mistakes, like, and that's a felony, right? I mean, so.
I think one, one of the, the key issues here is verification of the individual, the applicant, that's.
And that, that's, that's, that's a, that's different and that's important, I think, right? So it's matching the fingerprints to the person with the light, like, you know, if they're in the database.
Because I think the current system right now is you, you have an applicant that's on paper.
Yeah.
I'm not really sure how the town handles it from there. Do they provide a driver's license and a photo ID confirming their identity to the applicant? And then on top of that, the second, you know, part of the identification process for the police department is the fingerprinting. The fingerprints is a biometric form of identification along with their information and their driver's license and their photo and all that other stuff. So, and at the end of the day, this is more advisory. I mean, you, you talk about an OUI 20 years ago, and there's no issues between 20 years ago and the current applicant date of the application. I'm pretty sure the board is gonna use reason and not deny the person the permit because of a 20-year-old OUI. So, but it's more advisory and it gives the board discretion and it just, it'll avoid those issues slipping through the cracks on things that you don't see right now. Like right now, you don't see anything out of state, you're only looking at Massachusetts. Is it possible someone moves from Rhode Island into, in our community and wants to be an ice cream vendor and has some serious violent convictions?
But the ice cream vendor is a state, state law that you have to comply with. So I can understand that one because it, it, there's something else that dictates that has to be done. It's the other businesses that get randomly added that concern me because, because I want to know why you picked those businesses? Because everybody in town that has a mobile food vendor license upon renewal is now gonna have to be fingerprinted and background checked. I, I, it just concerns me.
Well, I'm not really sure. Maybe you can give me an idea on some of these permits. Are there expiration dates on them, or do they, once they get them, they're in place?
The dealer of secondhand articles, that would be Excel, right? That's, that's one they, every single year. And is that the only one we have?
No, all of the liquor licenses, all of the.
Those are yours, I'm saying.
Class two and class three.
Liquor licenses not on here.
They're all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the hawkers and peddler, the hawkers is the.
You said hawkers and peddlers, right?
Is that, that's like for the 4th of July, right?
The 4th of July.
Oh, and those are, those are already done yearly, right?
Do every year.
And I, I can understand those, like I said, but I, I can understand the hawkers and peddlers and the door-to-door sales. My concern is that the people that are really interested in committing crimes are not coming to pull a permit and get fingerprinted.
Well, I think this is, this is a template. It's up for whatever the town decides to do in these permits. You can exclude three of them. You can exclude, you can only have, if you want to put one of them on there. The ice cream vendor, that would assist me in my process, because right now, if this, if I don't have anything in place, I can't submit the fingerprints.
Right, that's the one that, that's, the state laws dictate that you have, you have to do. So that one, I understand why it's on here. And I understand the intent behind it. My concern is when you leave things up to subjectivity, then the waters get murky for me, because like I said, depending on the board that's making the decision, you could be putting people out of business, and that concerns me. For things that might not rise to a level that this board would think is, is actionable, but a future board might, and it's just, it's just subjective, right? Like this board might say, oh, a 10-year-old DUI is fine. The next board might say, no, uh-uh, not doing it. My, my son was killed by a drunk driver and any DUI, you're no good, you're not getting a license. It concerns me, that's all.
That's fair.
Chief, in, in your report, you state that suitability will be determined. I assume, like the federal government, like for instance, personal experience, I have my background on every five years, right, for, for my clearance. So every five years, they come and talk to me, my neighbors, my friends, colleagues, everything, right? It's uncomfortable, but we get through it and it's good for another five years, right? Some people are 10 years, which is great. But the, the information pulled, they use what's called the Douglas factors, right? Which is determines suitability based on an aggregation of data, right? So instead of the one issue that they had 20 years ago, where there are multiple issues, that then it gives you a different conclusion at the end of the, the background. Well, all that information is pretty sensitive. Do we have the current capacity, right, to store the information as needed in our servers or whatnot? I know it's a very light load based on just what we have here today, as far as the information, as far as fingerprints, like, I know it's all digitally stored, I just want to make sure that, let's say this goes forward, now we don't have to come back next town meeting and say, hey, I gotta increase my, I gotta go from four terabytes to 10 terabytes for potential backgrounds.
So regarding the Corey check, that's all database and cloud-driven with, so there's no really expense or requirement for our data with here within the police department other than our own CAD system. I guess that does create data into our CAD system, but we're maintaining that now, we're dealing with that type of info. We're dealing with that type of information on a daily basis.
Right.
So I don't think there's really a concern for the data that we're dealing with. But regarding suitability, yes, it's, there's time and energy when we, you know, potentially could be doing these fingerprinting and background checks. If I had to guess, you know, give you a timeframe of how much that takes, maybe twenty, thirty minutes of you physically doing the fingerprint checks and then checking the online data with, through quarry per individual, per permit. But I see that as well worth it if it provides better safety to the community, right? So that's the overall goal here to make sure that, you know, we're not creating more of an issue out in the community in the permit.
Now, how do you foresee the fingerprinting, right? I'm assuming they come in, I'm assuming they use like a guardian type system, right, that we have and, and use for digital fingerprints, right? Which is pretty standard. But as far online, like the quarry process, the beginning, is there going to be, or potentially be an online portion first for them to fill out? Once they get through that, almost like the firearm licensing permits, right?
So once, you know, what I envision is when someone applies for the town for a certain type of permit, that's in one of the categories, that's identified in the bylaw, they'll be directed to the police department to complete a form regarding the quarry check. And in that form, they would be, have a thorough understanding that they're consenting to the fingerprinting process. And that normally the communities are identifying a fee. The statute requires that thirty dollars be directed to a state entity of an account. And then the towns can allot another fee for the towns processing. I've seen towns range from a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty dollars per process. But they would be required to fill out a form of consent. They have to pay the fee and then they go through that process of getting fingerprinted and then the background check. And then a report would be submitted to the, the authority of a recommendation. And again, it's, it's only a recommendation from the police department to the board and they are the deciding factor.
As a curve ball to this, to this, do you foresee this general law expanding for all employees?
For hiring process?
Hiring, maintenance, that's not maintenance, but yearly checks on our employees, make sure they're doing.
Well, this quarry reform has been in place since two thousand and twelve. And here we are coming up on two thousand and twenty six and there's, hasn't been any signs of change to that. So I, I can't foresee the future, but here we are for thirteen, you know, see thirteen years later and it hasn't been changed.
And the current two thousand and twelve law, it states that as a reciprocal yearly background check for all public employees? Is that what it states now? As far as, let's say, we have police, fire, we have town employees, right? Are they going to be proposing that there also going to be quarry check every year, fingerprinted every year?
So regarding the police and communications, we're required to do it once every five years. Okay? We have to because of quarry. The other town employees, I don't know. That's, I don't know what, what do you guys do regarding background checks on your own employees?
It's just, it's just the initial hire.
It's just the initial, we're just working right now on some new, to implement some new background checks for anybody working with vulnerable populations. But I don't believe those policies have been adopted yet, which would be seniors and.
Yeah, like I'm thinking like people who drive around, like people for the COA, stuff like that.
The COA, yeah, we're working on those to do a quarry and a sorry, because we don't do that, which is a sex offender.
Yeah, I just, I remember we just learned about that recently. I always assumed that they're one of the same, but there's.
So we're working on those policy changes for the vulnerable population. But yeah, you just get the quarry. We're also working on the vehicle policy, which would be your driving record for anybody that drives a town vehicle. So there's those changes that we are working on that if we have an issue with the things that I think would affect your ability to do your job, we will be able to see those things, but not a full quarry and background check after you're hired.
Yeah. Okay.
I like this on surface. It's just, I do think some of it, the reasons we've talked about tonight need some tightening up. But I like the idea of protecting our people, right? Like it's, it's a no brainer when you talk about an ice cream truck where kids are running over to it sometimes without their parents, right? They hear it, they're running out there and, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's akin to like having a rotary, right? I remember the conversations when the, the rotary on East Free Town, right, was, was built. Everyone was up in arms and probably still, people still are, right? But over time, they've gotten used to the rotary and come to love it, right? Because it makes sense. Background checks are the similar, similar thing. Once you go through it for the first time, it feels raw, right? Because it's like, you need what from me, right? It's a lot of information you're going to need to make a suitable determination on yourself, right? But after a while, like, again, I go through it every few years and it's, it's part of doing business, right? It goes pretty quick and a lot of the questions are the same over and over again unless something's happened, right? So, I don't know. Yeah, it's like, like you said, Selectman Zager. It's like, on the surface, I like it. Then we have to make sure we iron it out.
Well, the only other mechanism I didn't mention, part of it is if, you know, if there's a report and a reflection regarding suitability, there's also a process for the individual to appeal or question what they think, you know, the report says. So that's, but, I mean, I'm not, I mean, the police department deals with it on a regular basis when we deal license to carry and, and FID cards. And I understand, everybody here understands the safety level in regards to that. So I'm dealing with suitability on a regular basis. People have LTCs and an issue comes up and I have to make a decision regarding suitability and giving them a suspension until, you know, they can prove to be fit or whatnot, so. Anyways, but that's obviously a lot different than some of these other permitting. It's not at the same safety level as license to carry. But there is a process for review and rebuttal of the report.
Makes sense. All right.
Thank you.
Hopefully that was helpful.
That was very helpful, thank you. I appreciate it. It's, it's an interesting topic, so.
Well, whatever the decision, the board, just please let me know because I have to make adjustments within the department regarding quarry. I have to draft some type of civil finger brain policy that reflects the agency. And if the town doesn't want to go in that direction of, you know, when I'm proposing here, that's fine. Then I'm just going to have to deal with a policy that deals with license to carry employees here for the town and ice cream vendors.
Okay, and, and yeah, I don't think we have anything in the agenda to vote on this anyways tonight, right? And to have to go to town meeting. So it's really, it's going to come when we put the agenda together for town meeting, right? The warrants, does that make sense?
Whatever, yeah, I just, I mean, I have a draft policy for the town. Carlton was able to help us out with that. He also drafted up the possible article for the, for the meeting. So he was very helpful on that.
That's right.
But I guess you guys need to really think about it and, and decide as a board where you want to go.
Absolutely. Yeah, I appreciate it, chief.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to item five. This is for ambulance abatements and write offs. So for, what period is this? Is this going to be September?
Correct.
Wow, can't talk. For September twenty twenty five, the total in abatements and write offs is one hundred and forty one thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars and eighty three cents. It's a lot. We collected forty one thousand or about forty two thousand. So with that, I'll turn a motion to approve July twenty twenty five, or sorry, September twenty twenty five abatements.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right, agenda item six. This is discussion and vote whether approve the following request from the community program director. So these are for dates for different events. So first one would be the holiday concert at VFW on twelve, five, twenty twenty five. Then we have paint and sip at VFW Hall on one, six, twenty twenty six. And then we have comedy night at VFW Hall on two, six, twenty twenty six. And then the final one is a holiday home decoration contest in December twenty twenty five, exact dates to be determined. I have no problem, this is awesome. Is this stuff, is the fun stuff to approve? Questions or concerns?
No. I've been to every one of those and they were fun, so I look forward to seeing them again.
All right. So with that, I'll turn a motion to approve the requested dates from the community program director in the agenda.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Item seven, discussion of vote whether approve providing a fifty dollar gift card for winner of the holiday home decoration contest request from the program, community program director?
On this, I think it has to come out of donations. It can't come out of tax levy.
Yeah.
So she just, I don't know, I, I meant to check to see if she has a donation account, which I, I think she does have. But it cannot come out of tax levy.
Okay, I'll donate the fifty bucks.
Yeah, me too. Same here.
Want to match, we'll make it a.
Yeah, I'll match you, I'll match you that. Because I look at it like this, I do decorations and one real lights is like fifty bucks, right? So we're trying to encourage people to go out and decorate their homes. Let's, let's up the ante there a little bit, you know? I think last year, what, six, seven houses got selected for it, so.
Did you win for fifty?
Absolutely.
Let's do it.
So with that, I'll turn a motion to approve providing a hundred and fifty dollar gift card to the winners of the holiday home decoration contest requests from the community program director and those donations will come from the, the board.
Okay, great.
And just hit us, just remind us that we owe you that.
Yes.
We'll have to probably do, so we'll have to do another motion at some point to accept those donations from ourselves. Okay, so do I have?
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Good call, listen.
All right. Item eight, discussion about whether accept three hundred dollar donation from the Plymouth Party, from Plymouth Party in support of the summer concert series?
Oh, that's great.
Plymouth Party, what is that?
I think they were the ice cream vendor from, that they had at the concert series.
Awesome, well, we appreciate it, Plymouth Party. Thank you very much. And so with that, I'll turn a motion to accept the three hundred dollar donation from Plymouth Party in support of the summer concert series.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, maybe we could send him a nice letter or something.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm going to kick it over to Selectman Zager for the board and parks commission.
Thank you, sir. Item number nine, discussion on fencing and cameras at Long Pond Football Field. So recently, you know, the Long Pond, they, there's been a lot of upgrades. And we've, we fielded in some concerns, so we decided that we should, you know, kind of talk about it. Two different things that have come up to us is one, the fencing around the field. And then also some cameras that were put up. The first part, the fencing, I think the fencing was put up for the right reason. My only caveat is that I don't believe that it should be locked off. I do think, however, that if chemicals have been applied, that it's okay to lock it, but it would also then need to be, the, I don't know the mechanism, whether or not we notify the town, have them notify the town, or we, we think that just having signage up for how long it's going to be closed is, is sufficient. But for obvious reasons at that point, I'm okay with the field being locked off for a safety concern. The cameras, the real concerns that were brought to our attention based on the cameras was two, was that they were worried about cameras pointing at homes. We've been reassured that the cameras are not pointing at anyone's homes. There's, there's no issue with privacy there. And then as well as the, they were worried about the structurability, the structure of screwing into a telephone pole that doesn't belong to them. My real concern is that it really has nothing to do with us. We don't own those poles, right? Verizon more than likely owns those poles, so they would really have to take it up with Verizon, in my opinion. But this is a discussion for our reasons, so. You know, just, just my two cents on kind of a little bit of background and why this is on the agenda.
Yeah, it's a tough situation, right? It's public land, right? But then we have it for children to use, right? They have a pretty good program, actually not pretty good, a great program for football and cheerleading, right? Can't forget the cheerleaders, they're great. But also, you have to also balance that with the private, with the respect of the, of the public land, right? So how we got here over the years, it's, you know, animals running on the field, pets, right? Not wild animals, you can't control wild animals, whether they fly in from Canada or migrate up from Florida. Two different things, right? The human pet, humans, well, humans, pet waste is the concern. And over the years, we've had, they've had anything from dogs running onto the field, whether they're spectators or whether they're from the neighbors. Can't determine that, right? But jumping on players, chasing them around. And not to mention, never a good day when a football player gets back up and they're covered in feces.
Yeah.
All right, and I, and I witness both sides of that over the years and a lot, a lot more recently. So I can see how football, right, and cheer want to protect their assets, right? Because now they put, what, three buildings there now? With a concession stand to the, the announcement tower and everything else and then upgraded their fencing. So they can do grass and things like that. And to answer your question from earlier, or your comment was regarding the notification. So they notify the town and they also, they put signs, so they do both, right? And they also post it off on social media and everything else. So it should, that should suffice, but I'm sure there's a better way of doing it as we think about it. As far as the locking it, yeah, that's a tough one, right? It's like, how different is it, in your opinion, from a boat ramp or a, the pond, right? We lock it off season. So is there, is there a middle of the road, common sense approach to give them their autonomy? Because they do have a lease for five, another five years, right? They've had one for years and before that they had one for years. Because you have to look at, you look at baseball and soccer or sorry, softball at K R and Little Fenway, they don't have any locks on their fields, right? So there's a balance there. I just, I need to, we need to find that balance. I can see both sides. I can see the children wanting to play on a clean field and grow and I can see, I can see residents wanting to use public land. I, I get both. So how do we solve it? So there's, is, do we go down a road and say, hey, during football season, they can do as needed for three, for three months? Because there's only three months, August, September, October, really?
I just don't know how you would release that as well as that, is that really going to make a difference as far as the dogs and the, the other animals getting on there? And someone, I, I mean, I, I still, at the end of the day, think that residents who pay taxes, pay for the property, you know, have the land to use. And although we have an agreement with football, it doesn't give them exclusivity to, to the property. It doesn't make it private property, it's still public land. So I would argue the same thing with baseball and, and obviously I'm very pro sports, you know, and, and the kids and one. I mean, at the end of the day, what it comes down to is a respect thing that people need to clean up after themselves and their pets. And, and really then we wouldn't have to have this conversation, you know?
Well, I agree, one hundred percent, because what's happened in the past just few months alone, the well's been damaged once again. Brand new fencing, uprooted and bent and everything else. So all those had to be replaced, not to mention the time, energy to get it all fixed and track it all down and go through the process of it all. It's, they're just trying to play football and cheerleading. But again, I understand the concerns of the residents, it's got to be.
But you, but you, you kind of said it before that you don't lock any of the other fields, right? No matter when it is, even if there's a big tournament going on over at Little Fenway, ahead of it, you're not locking the field off. So it's kind of tough to say that they should do that over there, but not over here. So, I mean, I just, I'm just trying to think of what's fair and, and like I said, at the end of the day, it's just, it's a respect issue. And I know that we can't police that, but people need to respect the property they're going on. You want to let your dog run, I mean, technically you're not supposed to, but if they do, you would hope that they would at least clean up after it.
Right, and I think they have, I know baseball and K R or Little Fenway K R have signs. I believe football does as well, that the town's either provider or provide the language, working with the, the ACO, right? Because I know, I remember reaching out to Lisa and asking her for a language. It, you know, no dogs are allowed on the fields. It's, we don't have dog parks. I know people don't love that, everyone wants a dog park and I can, as a dog owner, a former dog owner, I get it. But we don't, as of right now, we don't, so we have to follow the laws, what we do have. So how do we, it's a tough one. It, it really is.
Yeah.
Is there a gate on the fence now?
There is. There's a gate on the, so there's a gate as you walk in where the concession stand is, right? Next to our, next to the light, we just put up for safety reasons. And there's one in the back gate near Long Pond. So, there's, there's gates, there's latches, they lock them in. It's only a four-foot gate or fence all the way around. If you want to get in, you can.
Yeah, the dogs can't.
Just the dogs can't get in.
Just can't. I don't, I mean, I think the gates can be closed, but not locked. I mean, if somebody wants to walk in there, they can. And they have, if they're there with their dog, they'll clean up after their dog. It might be just the dogs that are running through the neighborhood that are running all over the field and pooping, and the owners are not with them. So, if the gates are shut, I think maybe, at least maybe it will keep the dogs off the fields. Like I said, I think, I mean, most owners of dogs generally clean up after their dogs.
Right. We just threatened that we're gonna do DNA testing on the dog poop. Wouldn't be the first time it has come up. But, and so, you know, football does agree that people should be able to use it. The biggest thing is, it's, it's the dog feces and like having dogs run up on players, right? They're governed by certain rules through the state and through the sports league that they're in, O C Y F L, right? So, they have their own rules and regulations regarding no pets and everything else. And so, when it happens and coaches, opposing players, referees, officials see it, they, they probably come down the league pretty hard, right? So, to keep their certification and maintain, maintenance for that league, you know, I'm all for letting the dog run around where it's, where it can, right? Get it some exercise. But there's also a beach right down the road. That's pretty easily accessible.
Oh, absolutely. But then we, you know, they, they shouldn't be down there doing the same thing, right? Like, you know, because then the resident who's gonna go lay down on the beach is now gonna deal with it as well. So, there's no, right, once again, I'm gonna circle back to, people just need to respect and respect the property and clean up after their pet. I don't have a problem with the fencing. And I, I think Debbie brought up a great point, that if, you know, someone that lives up the road, their dog comes running down and the gates closed, now they can't get onto the field and go to the bathroom. You would hope that at least someone would, that would mean that person would be in there with their dog and see what their dog has done. And you would hope that they clean up after it. I also don't think that there's any reason a, you know, 12-year-old kid should be worried about stepping in it, rolling in it. I, I agree. It's gross on every level. And I don't blame football for trying to take the actions they
Oh, no. Absolutely.
I'm just trying to think of what makes the most sense and us doing what's right for the town as a whole.
Yeah. And I think what adds to the problem as well is, it's like, one, it's a secluded area, right? Doesn't, it gets used, but not as much use as it can potentially have, right? I know we just discussed park improvements with Long Pond and everything else. I think once the lights go on to the street, it'll change some of that look and feel, right? Because it's so dark there. It's so easy to go do whatever you want, right? And that's why lights are, not just a safety thing, but it'll be aesthetically pleasing. And maybe it does give you opportunity to be able to walk your dog on the side of the road or something like that. Because now you can see where you're going, right? So, yeah.
All right. Well, I mean, we don't have anything to vote on, but I guess it would just be my recommendation that they don't lock the gates unless they, you know, and I mean, you guys say how you feel, but it's, that's just my, my personal feeling on it.
Yeah. And as far as the cameras, I just want to clarify one thing. As far as the cameras, when there are cameras on, on public property, right, the expectation of privacy in public property is zero.
Yeah.
Right? So, let's say, it, it doesn't happen, right? The cameras are not pointing anything other than the field, concession stand, the towers, the building structures that are there. However, if they were, unfortunately, by law, very little things we can do, take action on because their privacy, because you don't have privacy in public. It's like us, it's like us taking, right? It's like us going out in public and talking to somebody. Someone's taking our photo. We don't have any rights to say, don't take my photo.
No. And that's why I was saying it's not pointing at anyone's
Correct. It's not. It's not.
Anyone's private property. The fact that you have cameras that are there, that are wherever, that's, that's completely okay. So,
Correct.
That's, I, I 100% agree. We're on camera a lot more than we'd like to admit, you know, throughout the course of every, every given day. So, so, yeah. So, all right. So, I think that's, that was a good, good discussion there. And agenda item number 10, discussion on conducting a feasibility study on town parks and open spaces. So, recently, last town meeting, you know, we, we received some funding from the town and really to make some improvements to these places. And one of the things Selectman Loeb's just brought up, right? We talked about lighting and stuff. And we have another source of hopefully getting the lighting there. But, you know, there's a lot of things that need to happen. And really, the, the first thing is obviously, like everything else, it's really doing a feasibility study to discuss what the actionable steps are to do at these locations. And when I say these locations, I really mean Long Pond and Hathaway Park. In, in our packets, you'll see that we've received some stuff with some feasibility stuff. And so, it's, you know, I guess this is more so that we can kind of see that this is not a cheap thing to do. The feasibility studies are pretty expensive. So, this one was really pointed at doing both of them at the same time. And, and although I appreciate that, I think it makes more sense to do one at a time. I think it really makes sense for us to take our money, put it towards one area, start with it. And then that way, we can start making actionable steps. I don't, what, what I'm scared of is us doing a feasibility study and then having it sit around for 10 years. We didn't do anything with it. We did very little with it. It's talked about, it's referenced, but nothing's ever done with it. And then a board down the road decides, yeah, we need to do something. And then they have to go out and get this thing updated. And we know that because
We do.
We've done it, right? And, and so, it's, I'm speaking on experience. But my personal opinion I'm gonna give is I think that Long Pond, at this point, would make the most sense. And, and I would encapsulate not only the fields, but the pond. I think that there's a lot of room for improvement on that side of town for, on, on that park that can happen. And if we could help a lot of different people over there between football, between, you know, other sports, between the beach. And I just think that we can do a lot of different things over there where it really makes sense in my eyes to start there.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. There's some things that the town can do, right? Based on, if you look at the 2019, 2020 Open Space Committee, right? We did a survey with SERPED, right? We even did presentations and everything else. So, the study exists, right? Well, a baseline study through SERPED and everything else. You know, I was there this weekend during homecoming. And my observation is this, right? I can see how the neighbors and the people living in that area are frustrated with football. I can see that. Not, not football themselves, but let's say, I'm trying to take my boat out. And I noticed this, and I was behind somebody leaving the properties with the boat and trailer, and they couldn't get through the street because cars were parked inside the road, right? And they just couldn't get out. We had to call the police. The police had to move people. It turned into an ordeal. And the guy just probably wanted to go fishing, right? Last day of the season. I'm all for it. I'm all for going and using your public road to get in and out of your property. It's not fair to them. So, there are things like lighting, for one, expanding the parking lot where it is now. We have hundreds of feet back. Let's, let's get that going. We have Millings sitting in the playground, in the playground, Chuck's playground, in the highway garden, right? So, there are things we can do. Go back 100 feet, add another 50, 100 rows of parking, and they wouldn't change the aesthetics at all, right? To make that the neighbors less, not, not say they're angry, less frustrated with the situation during those times. So, there's things we can do. Yeah. Gosh, that's the only park we have in town that doesn't have a swing set, right? There's, there's been very little things done to that area. Even putting a bathroom there would be beneficial to both football as well as the residents going to use the facilities. When I was there this weekend, I wanted to go use the beach. Somebody wanted to go fishing this weekend. I watched them. I'm in my chair, rolling down, and I look at the little kid, had his fishing pole. He's like, where do I park? Where? The parents are like, where do we park? It was full. Great for football, using it. And it's what it's there for. But now the residents can't enjoy it. So, there's, again, there are different things we can do to help lessen the strain on both ends. And it's some, easy things to do. We can do it tomorrow and be done pretty quickly, right? With our very, with very little money because we have all the materials and the equipment.
And, and I think that selfishly, the three of us, well, four out of the five of us sitting up here live on the Asuna side of town, right? So, we have more stuff over there. I do think that this side of town lacks some of that stuff, to your point. We don't have a playground over here. So, we can, we can do things like adding a playground. And it just makes sense to start there in my eyes. Really go out, get some quotes, get a feasibility study, get it moving, get ourselves some framework.
And Hathaway Park's already got some love recently, right?
Yeah.
It has the, you know, it has the racks for the, for the kayaks. It has the pickleball slash basketball court. It has the playground, you know? And it's like
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in good shape.
Yeah. I, I go there
More benches, more benches everywhere.
And it has the electricity and the lighting.
Yeah.
Which is, we did get a grant from RFP to help with electricity, to bring down that down to the beach, which will change that whole area. But, but, you know, the feasibility study will ensure that we don't do this and then realize, oh, we shouldn't have done this here because now we want to do this.
Well, I agree. It, it needs a lot of love. It's, it's one of the original fields for this town. It's been used for everything, right? Time to put some love back into it, right? And again, taking our needs and they keep, they keep expanding, right? There's more people trying to use the area. Let's make it usable. Because right now, it looks like if it doesn't get cut every few weeks, it's so much overbrush and it, it looks abandoned. So, if it looks abandoned, of course, you gotta have all the nonsense that goes with it. So,
Yeah. I think we need some, you know, lighting and then some security stuff.
100% I concur.
So, is there a vote we can take on this right now?
Uh, no, I don't have a vote on there. We're just, I just needed some direction. I will bring stuff back to the board to get, I'll probably put out an RFP for a feasibility study for that park over there and get some prices and then bring them back.
I think we have consensus. I think that'll make sense. Yeah.
Well, one thing we can do is, let's see if Chuck is able to go, go out there and look at the, the parking lot. Maybe get with Mike the assessors office, make sure we know where the boundary lines are and expand that parking lot, right? It's, I believe there's 200 feet back there that they can use.
Yeah, but we gotta be, I,
Do it the right way. Do it the right way.
Yeah. And it is wetlands down back. Drops off and it's probably wet down bottom. So, you have buffer zones. So, I, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to try and send him out there to, to try and hurry up and cut into stuff.
Oh, absolutely. No, we, we could do it the right way. But I, I think there's, I think on the right side, on along the road, as you're right, it drops off. I think towards the back, as soon as the beginning of it, it's pretty solid.
And then, then it's what property lines. So, I don't want to try and rush into something that we could end up
Oh, sure.
Giving more damage down the road. So,
The good news is, their, their last home game was this past weekend, right? They had a homecoming rally. It was, it was great. So, there's time. So, now we have the offseason to kind of fix it before they start back up in the spring. So,
Perfect. Good. All right. You good?
Good.
Yeah. So, Deb, anything you want to talk about before we?
No, I think, you know, I'm just coming back, so I don't, I'm not quite in the swing of things yet, but I will be. Don't forget, October 19th is the open house at the fire station for to, to show off the new addition. And I think it's, they're gonna have their equipment there. And October 19th, everybody can go and touch a truck, I guess.
Touch a truck?
Did they install a fibrin pole?
I don't know. So,
Climb up it.
So, the addition is substantially complete, we'll call it that. So, that's, that's pretty, it's really nice. So, get a chance to go look at it. You should go.
Yeah, for sure.
Oh, they did a great job.
Should we go there and cook them a meal? Three selectmen from North American, cook the five-minute meal?
See how we do?
You do not want.
I might burn the place down, actually.
They cook better than all of us. You should just go by there at lunchtime. That's it. That's all I got for you guys.
All right. Great. Thank you. Sign. Shouldn't be that much today. Might be, might be a world record.
The Hatchison event and ambulance today. That's, that's it.
Be welcome.
Look at us.
We had, we had back-to-back meetings, right? That always
Yeah, we had a meeting last week.
Always helps. But, you know.
It's just a little bit of a quieter time, but it's gonna ramp back up. It's gonna be budget season before we know it. And town, we gotta get ready for the next, the town meeting. So,
Yeah.
Always a town meeting.
Actually, and then, you know, you get the holidays mixed in there. We're gonna start doing that.
Yep.
Holidays are coming fast. My wife has this yearly calendar. She's up the entire year. How many days left for Christmas? We're like in like under 100 now.
Yeah, it's crazy. So,
But then, so we're, this is probably the end of the law. We're gonna get busy.
All right. Well, we'll do what we gotta do.
So, we get, pay the median bucks.
Yep. All right. So, with that, I'm trying to motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Suck it.